Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, April 16th, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I would like to make note that we will be tabling Items B and C under Planning and Zoning until tomorrow night's meeting. And with that change being made, I'll ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries... Mr. Holmes, are you in favor of the agenda? Motion carries 5-0. Before I move into the agenda for today, I would like to ask that the citizens of Henry County continue to keep the Birch family in your prayers. As you are probably all aware, Connor Birch, 11-years-old, who is the son of one of our police captains, was tragically struck and killed by a car getting on the school bus last week. For those of you who wish to help this family, we've had a number of inquiries as to how you can help. There is a memorial fund that has been set up at Heritage Bank in McDonough, the Keys Ferry Office in McDonough. And if you wish to contribute to that memorial fund to assist the family, we certainly encourage you to do so. And again, please keep that family in your prayers. Moving on to public safety, we have a resolution requesting authorization to accept a donation from the Fairview Civic Club. Our presenter is Chief Bill Lacy of the Fire Department, who is not here, but that's Exhibit Number One. Mr. County Manager, would you like to make that presentation?
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot.
Need to go up there?
No, you can do it from where you're at.
The Fairview Civic Club is, again, is the... Last week they made a, I think, week... Meeting before, I think there was a donation of $5,000. And again, they're coming forth with another generous donation, this time for the Fire Department. It's been commented by other board members before, their generosity each year, and they continue to do it. And this is $5,000 for the Fire Department.
Unless there are any questions pertaining to the donation of $5,000, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Once again, Fairview Civic Center stepped up to the plate. They've done this, they continually do this for Henry County, and they do it for the public safety, and they don't discriminate between the police or the fire. They give... They've done it so many times that it's gratifying to see that we've got a community center that wants to help out our public safety. You know, and the Fairview Civic League or Center is a great, great organization that helps our people in Henry County.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you mentioning that. I know Commissioner Holder had mentioned last week, too, that they've been very generous at Cuba Hacha, providing money to build pavilions and things of that nature for our schoolchildren. So, we certainly want to recognize that organization for the wonderful contributions they make to our community. Moving on to Social Services, we have a resolution requesting approval of Amendment Number Two to the Georgia Department of Human Services Coordinated Transportation Contract. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning. The Georgia Department of Human Services has anticipated that additional funds will be needed this year to complete the contract requirements. They're requesting to add $21,462 to the current contract, bringing the total transportation contract for consumers to $513,749.13. Request approval, please.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
There again, it's just in form of a comment, because I looked back into the information that was given to us and noticed that the federal and the state, and that there's a zero match on this.
Correct, it's a fee for service.
You know, and I've gotten several comments from some in the past couple of months or so about how we shouldn't be accepting federal money or state money. And I always kind of chuckle a little bit at it, because we send a lot more money to the state and to the federal government than we ever get back.
Yes.
So, I think that any time that we can get money back from them, I think it's a plus, and I think that we should continue to work hard to get our money back to Henry County. Thank you.
And Mr. County Manager, I don't know if we will be discussing this further during the budget, but you had a breakdown, you shared with me last week, of the riders who used the transit program. How many of those are disabled? How many of those are elderly? And I don't know if you would like to present those numbers this morning, or if you want to wait until later when we have a budget hearing to discuss that.
I can give you at the top of my head what I recall. In the month of February, if I'm incorrect, I believe you put the report together, it's about 7,240 passengers in the month of February. Roughly 1,000 were for individuals who had to go get their medical appointments. 1,700 were to make a trip to the senior center to be with friends and get out of the house. I think it was 2,700 roughly were for disabled. That's the majority of them right there, but that was one month. And we also tracked, I think, the week before last, just to see on the medical side, how many of the passengers in one week were going for medical. And I believe it was 40 a day.
Correct.
Just per day, it was about 40 citizens who were using the transit system for assistance to get to a medical appointment.
Thank you for sharing that. Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this resolution? If not, you have before you a resolution accepting and agreeing to the amendment for the additional funds, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to include the Small Business Plan into the Henry County Transit Department Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program, and that's Exhibit Number Three.
Thank you. Recent changes to 49 CFR Part 26 requires that programs receiving more than $250,000 from assistance from the Federal Transit Administration include and develop and include a small business plan within their disadvantaged business enterprise program. The requirement was to have something completed and submitted to the FTA on February 28th, and we've submitted a draft proposal to them so that we could meet that requirement and bring that to you today for approval.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the inclusion of a Small Business Plan into the Transit Department's Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program, and I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Holmes is there, second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Moving on to Technology Services, we have a resolution requesting approval to transfer funds to cover the costs from the Commvault Software. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Director of Technology Services, Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning. Back in the fourth quarter of 2011, we went out to bid for software to handle our backup and disaster recovery, e-discovery, email archiving, that sort of thing, that's transforming our data center, and it's going to be set up for all of our new software that's coming onboard. The board approved AdCap Network Systems for the purchase of that software. However, we didn't allocate any funds to do that with. Because of the timeline that we were on, the county manager and the finance director authorized that we go ahead and use the unallocated small equipment fund to use to go ahead and get that purchased, so that we could go ahead and not delay the rest of that project as we move forward. This is basically, this is basically just doing a funds transfer, allocating 911 funds to be used specifically for that, which the total amount for the Commvault Software is just going to be a portion of what 911's burden would be for the entire system. And so, with that, I'll take any questions.
Does any board member have a question?
Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Stamey?
Mr. Bush, this will no way affect the move-in of our new facilities for 911, will it? Okay? Plenty of money there, that's secure, correct?
There's money in that account to cover the move-in. I wouldn't say plenty of money.
Well, plenty of money to cover the move-in, correct? Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the transfer of the funds, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey is there, second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. Moving on to Public Works, we have a resolution requesting approval of a utility agreement with Central Georgia EMC to relocate power poles on Higgins Road. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
I just want to record to show that I will abstain from the discussion or the vote on this, because this will be a negotiated deal between Central Georgia and Henry County, and I am a member of the, on the board at Central Georgia.
Thank you, Mr. Holder.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. We are seeking authorization to relocate three power poles that are in conflict with our project on Higgins Road. Central Georgia has provided an estimated cost of $18,311.08. But a bill for the actual cost will be submitted once the work is completed. The estimated cost does include all engineering materials, labor overhead, and right-of-way procurement costs. Our original budget for Higgins included $5,000 for utility relocation. The remainder needed, the $13,311.08, is available from savings from our professional, we have on here, the cost of surveying, which is in our professional account. In that account, I believe there was like $64,000, and we've spent approximately $36,000 to $40,000.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution that approves the agreement with Henry County and Central Georgia EMC on the relocation of the poles, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Under Purchasing, the first item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to replace the culvert at Sealy Drive. Our presenter is Rod Gray, Purchasing Director, Exhibit Number Six.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The first item I have for presentation this morning is a sealed bid for Sealy Drive over tributary to Wolf Creek culvert replacement. The recommendation is to award this project to Sunbelt Structures of Tucker, Georgia, with a low bid of $143,994.30. The project will be funded by a combination of Georgia DOT Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Program Funds and Henry DOT General Fund Money. LMIG will pay $143,107, and the remaining $887.30 will be funded out of the DOT's general fund budget.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have a comment and also a question. Of course, that, this project lies within District One. When is the notice to proceed? How long do the people have? This bridge has been out for, Terry, over a year?
Over a year. And our next process will be when the board awards this, we'll send a copy of this to the Georgia DOT. They'll finalize our contract, our LMIG contract, which is LMIG here, they combine LARP and the old state aid, and now call it LMIG. So, we'll get that contract, once that, bring the contract to the board, y'all will accept that contract, then we can proceed with a notice on there. We have...
An estimated time, because people, people are starting to really wonder why this hasn't been repaired.
We should be... Well, I anticipate, I hope to have that contract ready. If GDOT, I will let them know today that this has been awarded. We should have the right-of-way certified this week. We send those two documents to them, they'll send us that state aid contract. If we can get it on, if I get it in time, I'll bring it to the next board meeting. From then, you're looking at about two to three weeks after that board meeting. So, I would say probably about a month, if all goes well.
And one final question. The design of this bridge was such that if this road is paved, or when it's actually paved, we won't have to go back and do an upgrade to the bridge, is that correct?
That is correct. We're putting this, it was a little wooden bridge in there that collapsed. We are building this box culvert wide enough, so in the future, when the road is paved, we will not have to do anything to that box culvert. Matter of fact, it's going to look a little bit odd, because in the future alignment, the road's going to move over a little bit to take care of some curve problems. So, when you probably go out there, and we're going to, for right now, we're going to put the road back where it is now and get it opened as quick as we can. But in the future, the road's going to move a little bit, so it's going to look kind of odd, because the culvert's not going to be centered exactly where the road's at now. But yes, it will be big enough to accommodate future road improvements.
Okay, I think Mr. Stamey had a question.
Terry, don't we have, didn't we list under SPOSS 2 and SPOSS 3 bridges repaired under just regular maintenance under bridges? Didn't there some policy of some money in that, in that account to cover the balance of this?
We did list the bridges, and on some of them, we named. I'd have to go back and see...
See, I think it was open on the bridges, because there were several bridges that needed to be done, and this one might, this one wasn't? I don't think we named a bridge, except Foster was on the list, I remember that because it was bad, but I didn't know...
East Atlanta and Foster and Crumley and Lower Woolsey, and I know we named those. On SPOSS 2, we did say, in SPOSS 2, I did, I think we had just some bridge improvements, because we did various bridges under that, but you know, the roughly $800 remaining, or 900, I mean, I'll get with Mike, and we can see if we can do that. If not, I'll have enough money in my pipe budget to cover it, I think.
Okay.
Well, I notice later on, we are going to be awarding for a proposal to modify our stormwater utility ordinance, and I would assume that in the modification of that utility ordinance, we'll look at the possibility of being able to use stormwater funds for culvert replacements, since it is tied to stormwater. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. So, I think it's imperative that we move forward on that, and then, because there are a number of other culverts throughout the county that's certainly going to require replacement, with funds being as tight as they are, we need to look at whatever sources are available. If there are no further questions pertaining to this item, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to Sunbelt Structures in the amount of $143,994.30, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to purchase 10 Dodge Chargers for use by the Police Department, and that is going to be Exhibit Number Seven.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As you stated, the request is to purchase 10 Dodge Chargers by the Police Department, utilizing the Georgia State Contract with Akins Ford Dodge Chrysler Jeep in Wynder, Georgia, at a cost of $22,297.18 per vehicle, for a total cost of $222,971.80. Federal seized funds will be used to purchase these vehicles.
Will these vehicles be used to replace cars that are currently in service? Or is this just in addition to the fleet they currently have?
All I know that is, they're going to be used for CID. I'm not sure if they're replacement vehicles or additional vehicles.
Okay. And do you know, I know you, sometimes the state contract is not always cheaper than bidding it out. How did you look at going about?
Well, we tried to get some quotes from Dodge dealers for comparison method. We did not get a lot of cooperation in that. A lot of times, if they think you're fishing, they're not going to really give you a solid number. So, we got some cooperation from Ford on another project, but not so much from Dodge. And I think another thing that was driving their lack of cooperation is Dodge goes out of production for the remainder of the year on April 27th, I believe. So, there'll be like a four to six-month void where they're not building cars. So, that, I think, actually played into it also.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, I, I know that we had bid the Fords out, because we had a similar situation where the state contract was around $20,000, and we ended up buying for $18,000, where we saved several thousand dollars apiece. The other thing is, and I know that federally seized funds are paying to purchase the vehicles, but these are CID, which Criminal Investigations Division. I have some, some questions, is, really, I would have loved to have seen them bid out, but if you're not getting any bids, then it doesn't make any difference whether you send them out or not.
Well, no, I did not do a bid, per se, so we would have, I feel confident we would have gotten more than one bid. I was just testing the market, as you stated, to see if the opportunity to buy cheaper than state contract was out there. And I just, we didn't get a lot of cooperation in the turnaround time we needed.
Well, a lot of times, and I know that we found it to be true here, is a lot of times we can buy cheaper than the state contract. I mean, we've seen it happen on this board, so. The other thing is, a couple of things I'm concerned with is, why would the CID, which is Criminal Investigations, they're really not chasing anybody. Why do they need 370 horsepower 5.7 Hemis in their cars? There's equipment on here that, that doesn't make any sense. $425 more for a 370 horsepower Hemi, when I think, when I think their regular engine runs about 300 horsepower. The Street Appearance Group for $441 for full-length four councils and eliminated cup holders, and, you know, there's just some things on here, I don't, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I mean, personally, I think we should have bid them out. I think we should have put out a, you know, request for quotes or proposals, and we should have bid them out. And then, we could have took a look and seen exactly what we were getting. But I also don't believe that CID needs Hemis, you know? And I noticed, too, and one that's coming up, Madam Chair, it must be replacing some, because there's 32 Ford Crown Vics that are looking at being sold in just, in a couple of, we'll be on it in just a few minutes. So, 32 police cars are coming off of the, on this next thing, so I'm kind of, now, I mean, I don't think, Ford's not making the Crown Vics anymore, I don't believe. I don't know the answer to that. I'll get to you in one minute. But, but I just, some of those things I don't understand.
Sir, if I may, though, they're not asking for the Hemi. There, there's a list there, but they're not checked. So, for clarification purpose, they did not request the Hemi, or the, the only options they requested were the full-size spare, the black vinyl floor covering, cloth front, vinyl rear bench, and the inoperable rear locks, windows and hinges.
I can appreciate that, but the, the cost is $222,971, and it's $22,297, so they might not be requesting it, but that's what they're getting.
No, sir.
Well, that's what you're requesting.
No, this is just a standard sheet from the dealership, and they've just put X marks on the options that are included in this quote.
For a vehicle total cost of $222,971 is right here on your sheet, I'm looking at it, Rod. And then, if I flip this over right here and take a look at the options, $22,297, don't tell me that it's not. If it is, then your front sheet's wrong, and you got the wrong information, you've got the wrong amount of money up there. So, one of them's right. Which one's right? Yes, sir.
The base price is $21,876 at the top.
Yes, sir.
And then, the options, the four options that are selected raises at about $400, and one of the options below that you'd see without an X is the Hemi. So, the base is the $21,876, and if you add the $142,89, $107, and $23,000, that'll get you to the $22,297.
So, okay, so your total price package is just including the two, the three items that are, that are checked in there?
Right. To the left, you'll see that the engine is a 3.6-liter high-output V6 engine, 291 horsepower to the left there.
I got you.
In the base.
I got you. There's four items, actually.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I apologize here, Rod, because I'm looking at that bottom number at $22,297, and I'm thinking that's the number for all the equipment listed above. I stand, I sit corrected, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're talking about this, but I still would like to see this bid it out. I mean, we, me and Mr. Bowman had a conversation earlier. If we're buying 10 at this price, and we would come off a state contract, I don't know the other board members' feelings on this, but we might even be able to pick up another car. And these cars are definitely replacing surplus vehicles. On the other, that's just my opinion, I think there might be something. We owe it to the citizens, at least, to see if there's any savings out there. If it comes back higher, we can always revert back to a state contract. We got this price already, we know what the state price is going to reflect, we just don't know what the open market will reflect.
That is a fair statement. Yes, sir.
And we have found over, you know, the last few years, that when we do bid it out, a lot of times, we are cheaper than state contracts. So, it's, you would think that with the, the volume under the state contract, it would be cheaper, but we haven't always found it to be that, that way.
And once again, I do apologize, Rod, because I, when I'm looking at the numbers, I'm just looking at that bottom-line number. I, I mean, I get a little bit...
It's not, it's not my first time. I can take one from now on, then, I'll be all right.
Well, I notice you're scrambling around, too, so you...
I just wasn't going to say anything else. I was just going to...
Just say, yes, you're right.
I was going to act like I fainted or something, that's what I was going to do, so.
Good idea, that's a good idea.
Just say, yes, you're right.
Maybe I should use that approach more often, myself.
Nobody wants to see a big man fall, so I was going to play...
Or the big man jump on the little man.
No, that's not going to happen, sir, I assure you of that.
Mr. Holder, you had a question?
I do. Rod, I know this is a state contract with Dodge. What would, and obviously, the CID elected to go this route, what is the comparison to this and forward? How much savings is in, on the state contract, based that way, your apples and apples?
Ford really doesn't have, Ford has a Taurus, and nobody, you know, I was speaking to some of my peers and some others in law enforcement, nobody really is using the Taurus law enforcement package.
Nobody wants a front-wheel drive police car.
Right, so, Ford is anticipating in the next, hopefully, rollout year, a law enforcement-type vehicle. The only real comparable is the Impala. And so, I don't know, I have those prices on my desk, but that's, your choices are looking at, like, as of right now, an Impala or the Charger?
At one time, not too long ago, when you could get a Crown Vic versus a Charger, you would, you would end up saving the price of a car in the purchase of five. So, that very well, it was about $5,000 a car difference is what it amounted to. Now, I don't know if that's ACS reason for my question.
I think the difference was, when the Crown Vic was in place, there was a police interceptor package, that was a much more clearly defined law enforcement package, and the base price wasn't that different, but when you added the interceptor package, it did bump it that four to five grand.
And also, if you look at this state contract, you're going to see GSP cars right here, because you'll see the electric blue, and you'll see the dark blue, midnight blue. It's their colors, this was tailored around their pursuit vehicles as a GSP car, no question about it. As far as Ford, and this is speculation on my part, but I think you're going to see Ford start to try to head law enforcement in the SUV-type thing, like Explorers and different things like that. In fact, even at various tracks, you see that now as a pace with, with police emblems and all on. So, I think that's where they're headed, but I don't know that, it's just speculation on my part, but that's all I have.
Well, if, if it pleases the board, we could table this item to tomorrow and allow Chief Nichols or someone from the Police Department to come in and maybe answer the questions that we've had pertaining to this vehicle, before we just automatically discard it and go out to bid, if, if the board's okay with that?
I mean, I'd like to see it bid it on the open market. I mean, if he's going, he's already looked at the numbers on the car, correct?
Yes.
I'd just like to look at it, I mean, go ahead and put it out on the open, because it's probably, it's getting time-sensitive at some point, isn't it?
Well, that's going to put us, that's going to put us 30 days out to...
There's a production deadline, but as to his urgency of need, I would feel more comfortable with him speaking to that. But yes, if you want to get in this production cycle, I would say tomorrow night would be your last opportunity.
See, what happened to us last time is, we ordered some Crown Vics last year, the reason the dealer wanted them out of, out of the county is because he had a surplus sitting in his back, in his back lot. And this might even be the same case with, with a local Dodge dealership, just a, you know, half a mile, I mean, six or eight miles, probably 10 miles up the road, he might have some Ember Toy sitting.
It's possible, especially with that color.
Mr. Preston?
And I just don't know, so I'm, I'm asking, pursuit vehicles, I mean, I got to believe, because I pulled up, you know, if you bought one off the showroom floor, you know, these are obviously built completely different. Can any dealership buy a pursuit vehicle, or is it coming through one central?
Any dealership can order a police, can place an order for police vehicles or pursuit vehicles, yes, sir.
Okay.
Some, if you're the state contract holder, you probably rank a little higher on the priority list due to your volume of purchases, but anyone can purchase, yes.
Okay. And another thing to consider, at some point, if you're buying these Macon Ford, and, which is in Wynder, isn't it, Wynder, Georgia, do you, would you be obligated to go out there? which is in Wyner, isn't it, Wyner, Georgia, would you be obligated to go over there to service or could you still say local?
No, you would not be obligated to service.
Sir? They have to open it?
All right, well, I will leave this one to the pleasure of the board. Whether you want to table it till tomorrow night and get some additional answers from the chief when he's available to be here to discuss it, or if you want to give instructions to put it out to bid and possibly if we lose production time, have to wait until four to six months for the vehicles.
I think we wait till tomorrow night. I think that's fine, but, and I'm not the authority, but that's not a bad price on the vehicle. And listen to what the chief has to say and see what the urgency, the sense of urgency and like Commissioner Bowman, in a couple of more exhibits, you're going to see probably why he's trying to get these on ends because he's going to roll over some cars. I think probably it's a good price. I would encourage you to seek some pricing today.
Yes, sir.
To where you could have it to compare tomorrow night. And this being state contract, seeing who the actual state contract dealer is, they very be, that I think that that may be a good price.
Can we table the request until tomorrow night?
If you'll make it as the form of a motion.
I'd like to table the request to be heard tomorrow night.
And we have a motion to table, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval of a service agreement with govdeals.com and that's exhibit number eight.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As stated, this is, presented to the board is an agreement with govdeals.com to sell county surplus vehicles and equipment. The recommendation would authorize the purchasing director to dispose of all approved and applicable surplus property by utilizing said agreement if the best interests of Henry County are represented by proceeding in this manner. The proposed agreement with govdeals.com is non-binding and can be utilized at no cost to Henry County, as in there's a cost, but no payment made by Henry County, as all surplus property will be sold with buyer's premium, which represents the profit for govdeals. No surplus property will be disposed of without the prior majority approval of the Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Holder?
I have, in reviewing it, Rod, the only thing that I disagree with is the option that was chosen.
That's not, we can certainly alter that, yes, sir.
My preference would be option B four, which would be no cost to the seller in the entire percentage going to the buyer's premium, because the twelve-and-a-half percent buyer's premium is somewhat consistent, ten is standard. But I don't believe it's going to affect the price of whatever we're trying to bid off.
Right.
By the extent, and we need for them to do the collecting and be responsible to us, it needs, there's an option there also, I mean, you saw it in your flexible pricing options, but option B four, I would encourage us not to have to pay gov bids or whoever that company is, govdeals, anything.
Okay.
And let it all be on the buyer.
They've been around for a while, haven't they, Rod? And I mean, govdeals, they approached us several years ago about doing the same thing on equipment. I couldn't remember.
And I worked with them in a previous life quite successfully. It really gives you an opportunity to not accumulate all this inventory that's just going to depreciate by sitting in elements. And if it's not in a protected lot, you're going to get vandalism, stealing copper, kids just bashing windows. And so we can move these vehicles, present them to you and move them real-time instead of accumulating enough to have an onsite auction.
Well, it seems like the bid seems to bring, the information that I'd gotten from them when we looked at them the last time is they seem to get more money than we do when we just got our local people coming in.
Right. And you can set a reserve, just like eBay, like particularly if you seized, like in my previous life, we seized a 2010 seven-series BMW that we sold. And we knew that there was a minimum that we would take for that, so we set the minimum. It was not an issue. That car sold at a very high price. So that's when you really see value for the counties, if you have a seized vehicle that actually is a decent vehicle, you start making some real money on those type deals.
Well, it certainly gives people an opportunity to participate who may not be able to come to a one-day auction, as has traditionally been held in the past, because I've cringed at some of the prices for what some of these things have sold for.
Well, especially when it's an absolute auction, you know, you tell the guy, we don't want this on the lot when you're done, get it gone, and that's what they do. And so if these vehicles don't sell, then we collectively come together and decide how we can get some value from them through other areas by moving them through the board, so.
Mr. Preston.
I was just, because it sounds like we've had a relationship for a period of time. Is this, I guess they have only one contract, you know, prices of the twelve-and-a-half, the seven-and-a-half, if we take the obligation, twelve-and-a-half if they cover all the rest. Is there any way, since we have had a long-term relationship to, in the future, I'm not saying on this one, but in the future, try to squeeze them a little bit? You never know if you, unless you ask.
I can check, is, we don't have a relationship. I've worked with them in the past, but you sort of get into semantics. We're going to get generally the same check, no matter which option, because it's like you stated, if it's all buyer's premium, then maybe they pay a little less for the vehicle. In the end, the check is going to be about the same. It's just how you want to market it. It's really, you know, how you market from the perspective of the county. So I would agree with you. If you don't want to, if you don't want a buyer's, any premium from us, then put the premium on the buyer. It's really not going to affect the bottom line.
In many cases, you have, you'll be selling computers or you'll be selling anything like that, up to, we sold a Porsche Carrera one time and like you said, the BMW. Those are car, those, we don't need to be, in my opinion, responsible for anything on the front end. It needs to be on that end and we're going to get to twelve-and-a-half percent.
And I imagine this is probably a standard deal that they give all government, but I was just asking, there's a five percent premium on them taking the risk of collections versus us? And I just, I don't know, it's the tightwad in me. I like to just squeeze, just to ask the question. They're going to say no, probably, and then you go, you carry on, and you know, and it's no big deal, but I just always like to ask the question.
I'm not sure how much room there is for negotiation. We could certainly look into it.
If there's not, that's fine. I just want the question asked.
I do not know the answer, though.
And I don't want to hold up this because of that either. I'm just asking the question.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this item? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution authorizing this in agreement with govdeals. And Mr. Holder, I think you wanted to amend that for an option four.
Option B four, which would be zero percent to the seller, twelve-and-a-half percent to the buyer.
Would you like to make a motion to approve with that?
I also move.
Okay, motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to declare certain county assets as surplus property and that's exhibit number nine.
Thank you, yes. We have attached a list of vehicles and equipment that we are asking the board to deem as surplus property so that we can utilize the contracts you just approved with govdeals to dispose of this, dispose of this equipment. Pending the approval of the surplus list and advertisement and public notice, the recommendation is to authorize the purchasing director to dispose of the surplus vehicles via auction, standard or online, depending on which method represents best value, as determined by the purchasing director and director of Fleet Services.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
One thing, and I know it's not a true comparison, but looking at this list of vehicles, we're looking at about eighty vehicles. I'm talking about from tractors and batwing mowers to fire trucks to police cars. When we look at this versus what some of our previous auctions have been here with the county, there's, to my knowledge, have never been eighty vehicles or equipment as consistent as these are. This should bring some good money, because in the past, we had everything from one-out desks, file cabinets, computers and what have you. And I'm sure at some point, you're going to have some of that to do the same thing with. But this should be a good sale because this is the kind of equipment that always brings the good money.
Yes, and you were correct that the idea was kind of a phased process. Get rid of the higher-valued items through surplus first, then move on to the old computers, the file cabinets and things of that nature. But to test the waters with govdeals on the true known commodities, the vehicles, and that was our approach, yes, sir.
Can they speak to Terry? Selling a Lowboy?
That's that Lowboy that was so old, the metal had gotten fatigued and it was ripping at the front. We bought another one about, about a year and a half, two years ago.
Right. That's good. And we just, we just bought a, did we just buy a used straw blower?
We bought a new one, so the old one is on this list.
Okay. And then this Skaggs lawnmower, I mean, it's a 2002, I guess it just cuts all the time, don't it?
That probably from wrecked the Skaggs lawnmower. I'm sure it's wore out.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm just looking at it because it seems like they're selling equipment, they were buying equipment. I'm not going to be as passionate about this as I was that, those Hemi engine. I'm not going to get myself in that trouble again, but no, I'm just.
Know what kind of motor that Skaggs had?
Yeah. Kind of engine that we had in that thing. No, I was just curious about the Lowboy. I mean, you know, just like we, it's falling apart.
One other thing, Terry, I noticed that some of these tractors, and I've heard there's some DOT guys before too, 1985 and 1983. We definitely have got the wear out of that tractor. I'm surprised we're not wanting to put it over there in the museum at Heritage, but that's an old tractor, eighty-three. I mean, still being used on a regular basis. Even on the batwing, that batwing mower, they got where they were working on that thing all the time. It was very unproductive. It stayed broke, it worked two days a week and stayed broke three days. I mean, you look at all the wells on that arm, it's amazing. That thing's been fixed so many times. So good steward of funds there, of time on funds.
Are there any other questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution requesting approval to authorize the disposal of the surplus vehicles that are attached and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a requisition to renew an agreement with ACS Government Systems and that's exhibit number ten.
Yes, this agreement with ACS Government, ACS Systems was originally approved by the board on April tenth, 2010. It is an ongoing service agreement that the tax assessor is asking be renewed at a cost of forty-seven thousand eighty-six dollars and seventy cents. The term of this contract would be, I understand we're past April first, but that would be when they needed it to cover the next, the next year for continuity purposes. And they have funds to cover this contract.
And that was an increase of about fifteen hundred dollars from last year?
Yes, it was not a substantial increase.
Any questions or comments pertaining to this item? We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a proposal to modify the stormwater utility ordinance and that's exhibit number eleven.
Yes, the recommendation on this is to award the project to Ecological Solutions of Roswell, Georgia, with a highest score of two-hundred-and-sixty-one out of a possible three-hundred points and also the lowest cost of thirty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. A budget transfer was required to fund this project, thirty thousand dollars for various stormwater department accounts, and the remaining nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars was in the proper account. Quest you approve.
Is there any reason why there was such a cost difference between your low bidder and your next low bidder? There's about a thirty thousand dollars difference in that.
I would feel more.
The man who knows it all. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. The biggest difference in them was basically the other three had change orders. They were allowing for change orders in there and this one wasn't. That was the biggest difference.
Mr. Bowman?
At the risk of sticking my foot back in my mouth again, what, it says the intent of this project is to review and update the stormwater ordinance. We can't do that. I mean, that's a question, I don't know the answer to that, I mean, obviously.
I'll have to defer that one to Terry because this was in the works before I got there. What we're going to do is really the whole stormwater utility. We set the utility up about five years ago. And when we set it up, I think we did a real good job at that time, but after five years of having the utility in place, there's several things in the utility we want to modify. In order to modify that, one of them is exactly what the chairman brought up earlier, is pipe in the right-of-way. When we originally set the utility up, stormwater does not have anything to do with anything inside the right-of-way. They pick up the water after it leaves the right-of-way, which at that time was, was our thinking at the time. We didn't know at that time, because we hadn't done our inventory of all the drainage structures at that time, what kind of cost that were, we found now that there's a tremendous cost out there of all the pipes in the right-of-way that need to be replaced. We were not aware of that five years ago because we were just starting our inventory process. So we want to modify the utility to change it where stormwater does get involved in the piping inside the right-of-way. That's, that for instance, is one thing that we want to revise. Another thing possibly is, when we originally did it, we come up with costs associated with everything we do and that's how the fee was set. One of the things that have been done over the last five years is floodplain mapping. We have somewhat got caught up on that, so what we want to do there is take that amount of money and do some additional things with it, like replacing pipe in the right-of-way. So there's about three or four little changes that we want to make to the utility. So what has to happen is you have to reset your level of services, what your stormwater utility is going to do. Then you recalculate the fees it takes to do that and see where you end up. And if that requires a, an amendment, then we'll be back before the board and modify our stormwater utility. So this study is to incorporate all of those changes that we're proposing to make, see what it costs, and then come back, come back to the board. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but.
Well, I'm no more confused than I was before, but it's okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I might add, sir, that part of this process will be involved, the commissioners at various stages, so your input into this, there will be scheduled meetings and public meetings, I might add, as well. So you'll be involved in this process as it goes through.
Any other questions? Not, you have before you a resolution to award the project to Ecological Solutions of Roswell, Georgia, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
And Rod, before you step away, I think we have the person who may have the answers to the car questions we were discussing earlier.
I don't know about that. I did catch just a small portion of that resolution when y'all were asking him some questions in regards to the car. And I was coming over here to try and render aid, provide a little bit of backup in reference to that. And then I was told right as I was pulling up in the parking lot that it was tabled until tomorrow, but what I specifically was going to try and add some more information to was the question that was posed regarding the Ford versus the Dodge question. And just to provide a little bit more in reference to that, if you care to hear that. You know, Ford, we've used the Crown Victorias for years and Ford stopped making the Crown Victorias last year. They have started making a car which, like Rod said, is basically a Taurus. They're calling it the Interceptor, but it's brand new. We really haven't been able to get any feedback from any other agencies as far as how that car is holding up and how it's working out for other agencies. Chief Nichols has spoken to Chief Dorsey over with McDonough, as well as several other chiefs at other agencies, because the Dodge Charger has been out for several years. They work. several years. They've worked out some kinks that they had initially when it first came out. And he's gotten a lot of positive feedback from those chiefs as far as how the Dodge is holding up for them. And that was one of the main reasons we were looking at going with the Dodge Charger versus this brand-new Ford Interceptor there. But that was the one question specifically that I wanted to try and help answer as well. I don't know if I can answer any other ones, but be more than willing to try. Basically, our detectives, you know, they're riding around in a bunch of older vehicles that, you know, a good number of them have excess of 150,000 miles, a variety of different vehicles are riding around. And I think even one detective's riding around in a Honda Civic or something. So they're definitely in need of some more vehicles, some more dependable and reliable vehicles, which is why we're hoping to be able to use seized funds to pay for these.
Okay. So the production window of opportunity is probably tomorrow at the latest for this set of cars. Otherwise, it'll be a four- to six-month wait. Is that correct, Rod, before production?
Four is pretty safe, yes. So the compelling question, if I may, was they were discussing whether there was value as to waiting and bidding it out and saving some money that way. But I didn't wanna speak to your need or your urgency of the department as to whether or not we should proceed with the state contract purchase. Was that a fair summary?
Yes.
Of where we left it? Well, I mean, they've got vehicles, you know, they are older, they are subject to, you know, going down or what have you. But I certainly understand, you know, if the board wants to do the bid, you know, to see if there's, you know, anybody else that can beat the state contract price. I don't think that, you know, that's unreasonable at all. So I certainly understand. I don't see a problem with that if the board wants to do that.
Mr. Preston?
I had was, I know, and I'm just doing this off memory, but I think doesn't Dodge have a 100,000-mile warranty, whereas Ford... If we could get some clarification on that too, because that might help us on repairs and other things, because that, you know, if there is a $500 to $1,000 difference, but the warranty extends an additional 50,000 miles, that helps.
Well, that's the other thing to factor into in the four-to-six-month window. How many repairs will be required for the cars that are currently in service, and there are cost savings to be gained by upgrading the vehicle sooner? Mr. Stamey?
Chase, I'm if you had an opportunity to go down about three or four years ago down at Speedway, when they had the open house with the cars, were you there that day?
Yes, sir. Actually, I think it was last year sometime where we drove some of the Ford, the new Fords.
There was another one, because Russ was still there. Russ went down there that day. He said he was impressed with the car, with the amount of speed and acceleration the car produced. But one of the problems, I think, was the brakes. And I've talked to several people at Dodge dealerships, and they said that they have improved the brakes on them. I think there was a lot of issues with the stopping power of the old Chargers, not this new Charger.
I cannot answer that, because I was not out there for that particular testing there. So I'm not sure on that.
And that was one of the reasons, I think, we ordered so many of the Crown Vic's. The last time around was, there was a couple of small issues. Now, I think this car actually has been in production now, is it three years, four years?
I would say at least three years.
Yes, a minimum.
So it's...
Yeah, Steve's running them. I mean, you know, and have run them since the beginning. So they should be having a good track record. Now, these cars, you're saying the ones that we discussed previously, the ten, are they on hand in Winder, or will they have to be built?
I don't think so. But we could still get on the production schedule. So there'd be a, you know, six-to-ten-week lead time after we placed an order, depending on where we get on the priority list by the timing of our order. Excuse me.
Are there any additional questions? We would still like you to, I guess, call around and check some other dealerships for those prices, if you can do that. And we've tabled this item till tomorrow night anyway. And if the commissioners have any other questions you'd like answered between now and tomorrow night, if you would get those to either Jason or Rod, either one, we can get those answered before tomorrow night's meeting.
Well, I'd like to thank Jason for hustling over here.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Trying to help us a little on that.
Yes.
Did you see me get run over by a Hemi? He just ran over me.
Well, I did see a portion of it. And in fact, the chief was watching as well, and he's like, "Get over there." So I got over here as quick as I could.
Deserving for that.
Absolutely.
All right. I'll try to get some... I'll try to get some numbers. I don't think we'll get another vehicle out of it, but it could be some savings. So I'll take a look at it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Moving on to planning and zoning, we have a resolution requesting approval to adopt an urban redevelopment plan. And our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, Exhibit number 12. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board. Back in February of 2012, the county was notified that portions of Henry County, as well as City of Hampton, were included within areas designated as 15% poverty, based upon the recent 2010 census data. This designation renders the opportunity for adjacent areas to become eligible for opportunity zone... Opportunity zone designation. And essentially, what that does is it allows for job tax credits of $3,500 for new jobs that are created within this area. Prior to the step of designating areas an opportunity zone, we've got the first step that the DCA requires is that a urban redevelopment plan must first be established and adopted. We've been going through that process now. We've been working in conjunction with the City of Hampton to identify and develop a urban redevelopment plan, which in essence states, you know, identifies areas that are considered to be less developed and/or blighted in these cases. Once that step takes place, we can move forward with the process of identifying opportunity zone, specific corridors within the urban redevelopment area. And those opportunity zones located within those areas would be... Receive the designation of the opportunity for the $3,500 job tax credit. I provided a map. Should be included in your package as well, for the public to see. This map delineates the areas, and you'll notice that they're all located, highlighted by the green highlighted areas, all located outside the area of Hampton. There's a subsequent map as well we prepared in conjunction with the City of Hampton that includes those areas in Hampton that they would like to have included as well. Again, as stated, we've been working in conjunction with the City of Hampton. We have... We're scheduled to meet with their council, city council, on May 1st for the public hearing, and that same day for the subsequent proposal for the adoption. A public hearing was held for this area, this redevelopment plan, on April 2nd. We've received no additional comments or questions in relation to it. So we've met the mandate that's required to move forward with this process. And so right now, we're asking the board for adoption of this plan, so we can begin the process of identifying the opportunity zones. And once we move forward identifying those opportunity zones, we'll come back and certainly bring that draft back to the board. One note I would like to add, and the county attorney made a good point. You know, we've identified, there've been three areas identified within the county that have the potential for opportunity zones. One is located around the McDonough area, another one up in the Stockbridge area. So ideally, you know, our goal is to, you know, tap in and make sure we maximize all the potential opportunity zones within the county. With that said, this one, so, you know, we send it... The hope is that we'll eventually have three opportunity zone, or three redevelopment areas. I'd like to amend the resolution to designate this as a redevelopment area within, you know, including areas of District Two, within areas of District Two. The subsequent redevelopment plans would include areas, again, we anticipate that the McDonough area would include areas of District One, Two, and Three, and the opportunity, the redevelopment plan up in the Stockbridge area will likely include areas within Districts Four and Five. So that'd be the one adjustment I'd like to make on the resolution, that this be designated as redevelopment area specific within District Two.
Okay. Mr. Preston?
Just, Michael, I think it's great. I just wanted to ask one question. On 1941, there's that one little blip, I don't know if you can see it, where it's kind of in no man's land, and I'm just worried about unintended consequences. It's no big deal to me, but I just wanted to make sure...
Yeah.
Is that... Anything we have to... You know, I don't wanna alienate one person, you know, in their lot, because that looks like it's outside the city limits with the way the crazy things were drawn.
Actually, yeah, it is located outside. And I wanna say, Commissioner, I believe it is highlighted. I think that area is outside, whatever it is. It's area is notched out. It should be reflected on the other map, but it is reflected. That parcel is included as part of...
Okay.
The Henry County portion.
Okay.
Because that is outside the city. You're correct. For whatever reason, it's kind of an odd configuration on the city boundaries. But that should be picked up as part of the...
Okay.
On the county side, not on the city side. And just so you know, we do have, as stated, we've been working with the cities. And that's the area being proposed within the City of Hampton. You see, they're all confined within the City of Hampton. So together, it forms one big...
Sure.
...big mass area. And again, the goal being to identify as big an area as possible to be able to maximize the number of opportunity zones you may be able to create.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this? Okay. If not, you have before you a resolution, which I guess designates the Henry County Urban Redevelopment Plan for District Two.
Yes, ma'am.
And with the subsequent areas that will be approved in the future for the other remaining districts.
Yes, ma'am.
And if there are no further questions, and this lies in District Two, I'll look to the District Two Commissioner for a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt the recommendation for the opportunity zone for the upcoming credits that would be available.
Okay. The urban redevelopment plan. Have a motion on the floor. I got a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We tabled items B and C. At this time, has anyone signed up for public comment? County manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am, Chair.
Miss County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events. Tomorrow, April the 17th, at 6:30 p.m., we have a regular meeting. Monday, April 31st, at 9:00 a.m., we have our workshop meeting. Tuesday, May the 1st, at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston. All in favor. Motion I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Preston. All in favor. Motion carries four-zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Preston. All in favor. Motion carries four-zero. If there's no further business to come before this board, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Holder. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston. All in favor. Motion carries four-zero. We stand adjourned.